So, let's just give it a couple seconds more. Ken, how was your vacation? How was your vacation? Yeah, we're out of the country. That's great.
Trustee Backner will be here soon, so we'll go.
She's walking up to the doors now. Oh, okay, all right.
Hi Henry.
Hi Bobby.
I can't say hi.
Not ready?
Not ready?
Of course.
Do it for your father.
Yeah, it was.
You think it was the one to start stabbing children?
Yes, she's just a little. Oh yeah, oh yeah.
You never know.
I wish.
We're all bringing hugs.
Delaware, Illinois. Hundred and one miles from the river. Sticks and took out the river. The river to the point that it was just.
And then he opens up the door.
It was right there.
Are you taking time off?
Yeah, it's not. Well, there's that. Martin, it's July, so.
The warm water.
That seventy degree weather comes.
I was sure.
So, what's the first?
You're gonna be back there.
We do.
I can't.
I love your shoes.
So, let's just give it a couple seconds more. Ken, how was your vacation? We're out of the country. That's great. Because it's really beach area, yeah. Yeah, that's a place to relax and take it in. So, we got new neighbors, you know. Have you met James in Chelsea? Haven't met him officially, but unofficially through the dogs. We have two dogs, two boxers. No, they're officially in. I met James, but I haven't met Chelsea. All right, well, I'm sure trustee Backner will be here soon, so we'll go. Oh, okay, all right. Two seconds before we take the roll call. Okay. All right, there you are. Hi, Erica. Okay, while you're settling in, we'll go ahead and take the roll call. So, welcome to our village board meeting. It's April twenty, what is it, fifth, a little after seven o'clock. If I can ask the clerk to please take the roll call.
Trustee Gillis?
Here.
Trustee Vasquez?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Yeah, he's absent right now until we can ask him to.
Trustee Bachner?
Here.
President Aducey?
Here. So, if I can get a motion to allow trustee Bachner to attend remotely due to work obligations.
Second.
Another vote? Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, if I can ask you all to please stand to say the Pledge of Legion.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Um, we have, uh, one citizen's comment. It's, uh, Jim Flanagan. Are you out here, Jim? Are you on, uh, in, on the Zoom call? He just wanted to acknowledge, uh, seniors week, which is a good thing to acknowledge. All right, I don't see Jim either place, so we'll just look for him a little bit later and we'll call on him. But, um, I'll let trustee Vasquez talk about seniors week, which is.
Which is popular, yes.
All right. Um, okay, uh, with that, um, we'll, we'll go ahead and start before the elected official comments, since we've got two recognitions. Um, we're gonna recognize, um, the fire department for, um, a job well done, uh, uh, most recently. So, I don't know if Chief Garner is, wanna step to the podium and acknowledge the wonderful work of our fire department. There you go. Wanna. Come on up here and take a picture. Well. Hopefully, we won't see him on a milk carton or anything.
Here, inside of it.
Uh, President Ducci, village board, uh, thank you for allowing us, allowing me this time to recognize the job, uh, that these fine men did, um, a couple weeks ago. Um, so on Thursday, March thirty first, at ten fifteen AM, a fire was reported in the home located at eight oh five Franklin Avenue. The fire department, police department were dispatched and arrived unseen within three minutes. On arrival, the officer of, uh, River Forest Engine two thirteen Lieutenant.
Table, so let's start with trustee O'Connell. Can you hear us? Bob?
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Can we start with you? Please?
What are we doing?
Oh, we're doing comments. Elected official comments.
Oh, okay. Um, thanks. Um, first of all, um, Lisa, congratulations. I stopped in the other day. Thank you very much. The only thing that I wanted to bring up was, um, there's something that occurred at our last village board meeting that kind of bothered me a little bit, and I just wanted to highlight it. You know, one of the citizens brought up as we were having a discussion about garbage, um, how people who have alleys don't have the white glove service that others quote unquote have throughout the village. Um, I hope we're not getting to a point where, um, you know, we think there's certain things that happen in certain parts of the village, and we should be, you know, highlighting those things, or we should be charging people extra. You know, we're one village, and for somebody who, you know, who has an alley and is getting, you know, is getting garbage service through their alley, you know, people on the north side of town got, uh, got a sewer system that improved the quality of life for members up there. Um, you know, we're spending a lot of money to have alleys put in throughout the communities and make them look nice and everything. So again, I, I just hope we don't get to this point in time where people are starting to nitpick a little bit on, on who gets what in the village. Um, and like I said, it really bothered me after, after our meeting last week that, that we, we were thinking that way. So, um, I hope everybody will make an effort, and I know we do every day when, you know, when we work and we sit around the board table every couple of weeks to make sure that we're taking care of everybody in River Forest and not just certain, uh, parts of the community. Um, other than that, um, I don't have anything else tonight.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you so much, Bob. Okay.
Okay, I'm next. Um, so I don't have much to say, just wanted to say I support what, uh, Bob just said uh, with regard to what type of village we want to be. Uh, I think that was very important, and I appreciate you saying that. But I also just want to say to Lisa directly, I did have the opportunity to work with you on the DEI committee, and I would say, uh, you know, you impressed me with your knowledge, your humility, and you were the first person to really welcome me into being a trustee. And I felt comfortable all the time just reaching out to you and telling you, okay, do I cut in? Do I say this? Do I do this? And you were always like, okay, do this, do that, do that. And so, you know, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, I truly appreciate you, and, and you will be missed.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Ken.
That's all.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I say the same thing that Ken said about you, Lisa. You're, um, you've got skills out the wazoo and talent and a sense of humor that we all appreciate. And especially in the past couple of years, you know, not only layer COVID, and then Eric leaving, and you stepping in and doing, you know, a couple of jobs during hard times. There were a lot of, uh, interesting issues that you had to grapple with, and you were our main person for that. And thank you for being so solid and, um, but with a sense of humor. Yeah, so as, as Ken said, you'll definitely be missed. Yeah. Um, the only other thing I was going to report on is that I did, um, participate in a call that was hosted by Chua Garcia, Fourth Congressional District Roundtable on the Federal Legislative Briefing Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, including, um, transportation initiatives and community project fun- funding. And, um, President Ducey joined also. Um, I want to just mention four things that were highlights to me on that call. Um, one is that, um, it was mentioned by the Department of Transportation expert who was on that there are now more resources than we have ever had before in the fifty-four year history of this program. It was, um, significant to me. Um, he also said that when implying for, applying for grants, there are five gu- guiding North Stars. So this is somewhat for the staff who might be handling more of our grant applications. And those are safety, you probably, probably not surprises, but it doesn't hurt to reiterate. Safety, climate, equity, economic strength, and transformation. Now, the third thing was that there is, uh, forty billion dollars intact, uh, billion dollars right now uh, for National Roadway Safety Strategy. And in my mind, I had been thinking, oh, the Harlem Street, uh, overpass. Um, but a trustee from Oak Park was on the call also and asked, and that seemed to have been sort of shunted to the side using railroad terms. And then the fourth item I wanted to mention is that there seems to be money available through the Transportation Alternatives Program for sidewalks, potholes, bike routes, and safe routes to school. So, um, as we look at our budget, especially tonight, and, um, look at what we, it is that we need to do, let's keep in mind these grant opportunities. Thank you.
That's great.
Um, congratulations, Lisa. All deserved. I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Well, let me just start off with, I think I'm going to make the resignation.
Yeah, all right.
Second.
Second? Am I?
Yeah. No, Lisa, no, on, seeing one of the, um, older people on the board, um, I will also join in saying I will miss you. Oh, um, I've had been working with you or maybe driving you um, and, um, and you were integral even before or during the absence when Eric has left us. Um, I do, I know you stepped up to the plate, uh, and you were, uh, heading up with two hats, and probably I would say two official hats, although I know you were handling and juggling a lot of other, uh, items for us as well, not only, uh, working at the board, uh, working with the staff, but most importantly, working for our residents. Um, and with all of that, um, do thank you so much for doing that. I know, um, this is a, uh, great, uh, opportunity for you, uh, bad, um, in terms of our position, and we, we will miss you. Um, and so I will only wish the best, uh, for you, um, and I hope you keep in touch. And I hope you still will say hello to us, uh, when you're in bigger and better things for your career. So, uh, thank you again for all, everything. Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Oh, that was on that. See, I got emotional on that.
Yeah, you sure did.
All right, now on the official business, um, I do want to report, um, very quickly, I got a number of things. Um, the Age Friendly Committee, we met on April the thirteenth. Uh, as, uh, new analysis on the data of the survey that we received, we started looking at a couple of the, uh, matrices that we started connecting with. Um, and we're hoping that are putting an out uh, the committee will come up to present to the board, um, and so we're narrowing that scope. Um, and, um, and the other thing that, uh, if Jim is not on the line, Flanagan, I'm going to take his thunder a little bit. Um, there, this is, uh, in May, we are going to be celebrating, uh, there are seniors, uh, from May the eleventh through May the twenty-fifth. There are going to be a number of activities for our seniors, uh, not only in River Forest, but in Oak Park, uh, and our neighboring villages as well. Um, I do want to highlight, um, let's see, ownerships, Oak Park River Forest Senior Services, they work together. Um, and, and so kudos to them and our senior services. Also, River Forest Library, I know they have a number of activities and classes, um, that our seniors participate in. And of course, um, I will be neglectful and say that our River Forest Police Department has been in a number of our senior activity, activities, not only in taking the training and being a leader in dementia, uh, training, but also in providing other, uh, classes and trainings for our seniors such as cyber, uh, security and, and fraud issues, um, and, and protecting seniors in that respect. So, um, thank you to them. And not to mention our, our River Forest Village here for ourselves, not that I'm tooting our horn, horn here, but the fact that we have a committee also. Um, and we have acknowledged and, and almost taken the leadership road in a number of senior, uh, citizen services activities for our, our seniors and, uh, and it could, again, uh, Kathy being, uh, our chair for not only Met- Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus on Age Friendly, but also in helping support our senior services committee here for River Forest. So, um, thank you for that. And, um, and then I also do want to highlight the fact that on May the eleventh, we have a Healthy Aging Fair. Uh, that's going to be one of the activities we have at Grace Lutheran Church. Um, it's actually also our River Forest Police Department highlights their ID bracelets, safety, safe, street safety. River Forest Fire Department have the emergency information packets that will be part of that activity. Um, then on May the fourteenth, we have the Housing Forum, um, that is relating to our aging in our communities. Um, that is, uh, the doors open at eight thirty at Concordia University, who has always, in the past, also provided programs for our seniors as well, River Forest. Um, and, um, that, um, and I'm sure, you can look, in fact, um, Jam Flanagan is the founder of our Celebrating Seniors Coalition. Uh, we do have a website, uh, or he has a website, I should say, celebratingseniors.net. Um, and, uh, Jim Flanagan, who I am saying that River Forest is, um, blessed with having him on our committee, and age, our age friendly committee, because he's been an asset, uh, in providing his skills and experience to our committee as well. Um, but I'm highlighting his website because, um, it, his website has a lot of information on the activities and information for our seniors. So please feel free to tap into his, uh, website, and thanks again, Jim, if you're online, maybe not. Um, la- uh, almost close to last, on April the fourteenth, um, trustee O'Connell, Kathy, Ducey, and I, at least from the board, we had Brian Murphy, we had both our chief of police, chief of, uh, uh, fire department, Jeff, and if I'm missing someone, Elijah. I mean, were you there at the groundbreaking, the groundbreaking, or no? Okay, okay. I've seen you so many times, so now I'm including you on everything. Uh, he's actually on a number of my committees, but we, we were there at the groundbreaking on Lake and Latrop. It was great to finally see, uh, the movement on that and, and that that's moving ahead. Um, and then last but least, really, this is last but least. Uh, you're probably, on, on May the ninth, um, at the Oak Park River Forest, they're actually going to have an open house of the, uh, first phase of the student services, um, construction project. Um, I'm not sure, they're telling me that they might have a little peek on the fifth project two for the physical education spaces, but it is there from five thirty to seven thirty. So if you guys are actually interested in seeing, uh, the renovations they did, uh, it's definitely worth going to.
Which one?
On Oak Park River Forest, they're constructing, imagine.
Are you at the high school?
The high school? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did I miss that part? Yeah.
So they have, uh...
The Oak Park River Forest High School.
Yeah, okay.
Has an open house.
Okay.
On May the ninth from five thirty to seven thirty on the renovations they made. Um, and I say student services because the first part was to, uh, do, focus the construction on, on the student resource areas, uh, which is right by the main entrance. So, um, yeah, they call it the Student Commons, but it's the, relating to the cafeteria, the, their, uh, the student area where they sit down. It's also connected to the library and the student, uh, nursing. Everything related to the students is really focused in the one entrance area that, uh, so they didn't have to move, uh, have the students run around the whole, uh, campus, so to speak, or building. Um, so, so definitely worth going to see, uh, from the pictures, um, that I saw.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, thank you for those questions. Sometimes I jump ahead too fast. Okay, thank you.
No worries. We'll keep you on the straight now. Go ahead, Lisa. Okay, I'll try to be quick. Um, reiterate what everybody else has said, Lisa. I will say the one thing that, um, always amazes me about you is your professionalism and poise are unparalleled. They're, it's something I aspire to. Yeah. Um, I want to make a quick wish for peace around the world. I think we need it right now. Um, and also make sure that we are celebrating Mother Earth. Earth Day was last week, Arbor Day, I think, is coming up. Um, and in celebration, I went into the woods in the mud, um, for the Des Plaines River Cleanup. And in walking, you know, kind of off the trail into the muck, um, I have to, I just wanted to, you know, kind of remind everybody that we really truly have a treasure with Thatcher Woods. Um, it makes our community a special place, and it is something that we should continue to safeguard and protect, working with the River Forest Park District and the Cook County Forest Preserve. Thank you. Thanks, Lisa. Okay, Erica?
So I'd like to start with a land acknowledgement. Um, as we begin, we are mindful that we hold these meetings on lands that was once and still inhabited by indigenous people, including the A'jibwa, the Chipewa, the Menominee, P'awwamawnee nations, and more. We will remember our nation's history and honor the native peoples stewards of this lands that was colonized, and that River Forest continues to be a place many people from diverse backgrounds live and gather. Um, I just want to reiterate the thank you to our firefighters and paramedics, um, who are well-trained, and, um, we're so fortunate to have everyone on that team. So thank you again. Um, and, uh, I want to congratulate the eighth graders at Roosevelt who just finished their, um, Washington DC trip this weekend. Uh, lots of, uh, wonderful, bright faces enjoying our Capitol and, um, learning more about our government and, and history. Um, and then um, I can't imagine this office without you, although I know that I'm going to have to a week from now. Um, you are, you're the full package. You are a triple threat. Um, we've been lucky to have you as long as we have. And, uh, you know, just everything that you've done in the past year or so, but even as other people have said, like, uh, the intr- the intricacies of, you know, cannabis sales and being able to present that so much information to us, and, um, and distilling it for us and having every single answer, like, to question, random questions. I think that is one of the, um, things that for me most highlights how, um, incredible you are for team, and, uh, we will sorely miss.
Um, well, let, yeah, let me echo everyone's compliments to you, Lisa, but I have to say, when Eric Palm left, I thought we were going to come, I mean, literally, I was a, not to use deer, because I know how sensitive it is, but I was a deer in the headlights. I'm like, why? How are you going to get through this? And, uh, boy, you got us through it. Um, and you did it with, as everyone mentioned, poise and patience, and you're articulate, you're, um, your writing skills are off the chart. It's so incredible. Um, I remember saying, okay, so now, now who's responsible for helping us with the zoning? Well, that's Lisa. Okay, who's the, who's the person that would know permitting? Uh, Lisa? Okay, and who knows all of our labor relations? Um, Lisa? So without hesitation, I mean, you had your hands in everything, and it worked so well. Um, and I know we, for the last twelve months, probably worked so close and so hard together, but, um, everything worked. Everything worked, and I knew, you know, we were stressing ourselves and stretching ourselves. Um, so I personally want to say thank you for being patient, uh, of course with me. Um, obviously with everything that goes on in just board administration and just administration, period. It's amazing just how well and calm. And I think, Erica, you said it the best, and you synthesize complex issues down to, you know, things that we can understand. And actually, I mean, and not like, you know, too simple, just enough, you know, for or, you know, busy like all the board members, uh, it, just enough to, for them to grasp the issue and understand the issue. That is a skill I literally haven't seen in my whole life. So, like I said, you're a triple threat. Um, I think you said it, I think you're right, and you've got a, you've got skills that are off the chart. So congratulations on, on your new role. We will miss you here. Um, you are always welcome back. Uh, if you find your way through River Forest ever, um, you know, please visit us. Uh, we don't want you to be a stranger. So, uh, and again, on behalf of the residents, I know there's a lot out there that appreciated your work and your tenacity and your patience with them. So on behalf of all them and us, I'd like to say thank you again. So thank you. So just, uh, real quick, uh, things that I've been involved with, uh, I know Katie mentioned, uh, Congressman, uh, Garcia's, um, uh, Zoom call. I thought it was very, uh, that was really good. Um, and I do understand, um, regarding what you said in terms of the bridge, the Harlem Bridge, but I think because CTA and UP are such a big part of that Harlem Bridge, that somehow we've got to get both Congressman Davis and Congressman Garcia interested in that project. There's money there, and I think we will. I think we've got enough, um, um, towns that are interested in, in working with us. Um, so I thought that was a great, uh, meeting with, uh, Congressman Garcia. And I didn't realize just how much, I think I was telling Sarah, that, how much, uh, district he has in River Forest. It's, it's, it's been a, not an insignificant amount. Um, so we welcome him and all of his ideas. Um, I also attended a resident meeting here, uh, regarding traffic and safety issues with Jeff and, um, say, uh, we've got some of those residents on the Thatcher Avenue, uh, on their way, at least thinking about bifurcating all the issues that they had, and I think they're, they were happy when they left. Um, I also attended and chaired the Legislative Committee of the IML. Um, I think I send you, and if you don't get it, um, I will contin- I will try to send you all, all the information from IML. If you, it, it's incredible, the amount of information that IML put, puts out. Um, and they really do synthesize information down, uh, for all of us to understand. So, um, uh, that I'll out to you. If you don't get it, just raise your hand and I'll make sure you get it. Um, as Res talked about, I did attend the Lake and Latrop Groundbreaking. And, um, him and everybody else who are interested to get, get it moving, so I think that was a good kickoff. Um, also want to remind the residents, and we should put this in our newsletter, which we will, that Concordia Track is open, and, um, you can get back on the south and up into the west end. They make it sound like it's closed, but it isn't. Just presidents tell you, just tell them to walk around to the south end of the track, and they are, um, it's open for use, uh, residents, or anybody's use. Um, and that's about it. And last, I know we'll see each other on the ninth, but, uh, meanwhile, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and grandmothers and, um, and anybody that, uh, loves that day. So with that, we'll move on to, uh, the, our consent agenda. Motion to consent agendas A through H. Move. Thank you. Okay. Any questions or comments, um, regarding those items? Uh, hearing none, I, uh... Yeah, of course.
Consent ag- agenda, item A, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. B, Village Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes, April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. C, Older Americans Month Proclamation. D, Bike Month Proclamation. E, Compost Awareness Week Resolution. F, International Risk Management Ag- Agency, IRMA, Delegate Change Resolution. B, Approval of the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three Compensation Plan Ordinance. H, Financial Report, March twenty twenty-two. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, so there's no, I'm, uh, no separate consideration on the consent agenda, so we'll move over to the recommendations of boards, commissions, and committees. Uh, this is, uh, the Sustainability Commission. Um, we don't need a motion, they're just looking for consensus recommendations from the commission to make a standalone text amendment, so I will...
Hi, uh, hi, I'm Jeff Beazey. Uh, Eric's out of town, so I, uh, volunteered to here on his behalf. Um, so I'm, uh, a member...
He's on the Sustainability Commission.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Beazey, sorry.
Yeah.
Been on the Sustainability Committee since, uh, or Commission since July. Um, and sort of initially helping out on some energy-related items is, that's been my, uh, profession, uh, building renewable energy projects for the last fifteen years. So have a sort of a special interest in this. Um, the, uh, so basically, the commission's been looking for ways to encourage, uh, the adoption of rooftop, uh, solar. I think there's been, uh, push in the past, and we got Soul Smart Bronze Designation. Um, we'd like to continue to make it as easy as possible for people who want, uh, to, to want to pursue it, to, I guess, as few administrative hurdles as possible. So, um, pursue that. Uh, we are trying to get Silver Designation. Um, we would have enough points through Soul Smart to do so, uh, with the exception of the requirement that, um, there be a, uh, text amendment or a letter, just maybe some detail that I'm maybe not the best qualified to, to, to explain. But, uh, basically, uh, we would recommend pursuing the text amendment so that we can receive, uh, the Silver Designation and the text amendment would mean, um, rooftop solar is a accessory use, um, for the zoning. Um, once we, if we get that designation, um, or, sorry, if we get the accessory use passed, um, that would also, uh, open the opportunity for us to pursue gold. We're not doing that at this time, but I think it should be fairly, um, easy down the road, uh, based on other, um, that are available to us that we can implement without further, uh, amendments such as this. Um, so that's the gist of it, uh, and that was our recommendation.
So, um, I'm, I don't know, anybody has questions about a text amendment? It just allows us to, you know, mo- modify or amend the zoning code to include, as I mentioned, a, an so that when anybody comes and wants to do a solar project, they can do it with, hopefully, easy. Then they do it now. So, and that's how we get our designation.
Any, is there any downside to it at all?
Unless you guys see it.
No, the staff's review of it, uh, there doesn't appear to be any, uh, downside to it. It improves our total score, as we mentioned, with regard to our Soul Smart status. So, um, no, we actually see this as a...
I don't think I saw it, but, um, there would not be any additional over these.
Right. Fee structures are a separate, uh, issue. We visited it another day. For, in order to gain the points for this, it was more just a need to change the, uh...
Ask a question regarding, um, is there any, I'm not, I'm not even sure the right word's conflict, but is there any problem with our historical buildings with putting up? I'm not trying to say not to do it, but is there an issue with it? Maybe that's the right word.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't binge against the historical preservation, uh, requirements. Uh, these are considered auxiliary accessory uses of, to the property. So as such, that, that doesn't change.
So the, if, if you had a significant structure on the village's historic structure survey, and you wanted to put up solar panels, if, if that would be akin to changing the windows and the triggers for historic preservation review were met with solar panels, then you'd still have to go through the HPC process, but you wouldn't have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get any zoning relief, because the idea is that the allowed is permitted zoning uses, but the HPC may still have a say.
That's the first one. And are you seeking, because, uh, in the rec- in the packet, it referred to option one, option two. Option one is we, do you wait to approve these later? I guess the zoning changes later.
Yeah.
Yeah, or option two. I'm fine with option two from my perspective. So, um, we can start doing that, knowing that too, that if for some reason, if there are other zoning changes when they are completed at the very end and somehow impact, or if there's something in the future that you may want to come back, or the sustainability may want to come back with a recommendation, then I welcome that, just so that we keep up to date, so to speak. So...
Yeah, and we, uh, the recommendation from the commission was, uh, was the text amendment pursued now. My perspective on that.
Oh, I guess the question is, does anyone oppose to option two?
Okay.
Sounds like the commission has the... Um, so, yeah, I mean, it makes some sense. We certainly want to be, uh, silver, we want to be gold. Um, so yeah, I mean, it makes some sense. We certainly want to be, uh, silver. We want to be gold.
Mm-hmm.
Good for our community and good for our, uh, stance. Right, great, super. So we'll, we'll let the administration take that on.
Now, the only problem is going to be Eric's going to keep saying patients and went through.
Yeah. Um, real quick before we move on, I'm just going to hand you maybe a point or whatever. I mean, we, we do actually have a new employee. I don't know if everybody has met Matt.
Oh, my God, I was wondering what it was.
Yeah.
It should have been unveiling later or something else.
And I just notice I look up. Sorry. I mean, it's totally my fault.
Okay.
Um, and, um, so welcome Matt, Matt, um, co-
Walsh?
Yeah, I know Matt Walsh. Uh, we've got a lot of Walshs in our, uh, community. Um, but, um, he comes to, you might want to tell us a little about yourself for the, for the board.
Are you related to any of them all?
Yeah, I don't think so, but-
Okay. Depends on what you think of them, right?
Yeah. Good point.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I was born and raised in Forest Park, just moved from there a couple of months ago. Just actually lived right on Des Plains, so about as close as I could be to River Forest. Uh, I previously served as, uh, the interim village manager down in, uh, Homer Glen, southwest suburb. Opportunity I saw last month. I was thrilled, uh, that it was available right next to the town I grew up in. And I was, that I was offered the position. I'm happy to help here. I know there's a lot of transition. So I'm trying to learn as fast as I can to help out the board and the residents.
Uh, you'll probably notice Matt's got a certain quiet competence and that's what attracted us to, uh, bringing him on board as long, as well as his, uh, experience working as a village administrator. Is a, um, founder that has a, a reputation for strengthening your steel pretty quickly. So we're, we're very pleased to have, um...
Welcome aboard. And I apologize for not acknowledging you early on. My, my fault. Um, all right. So let's, uh, just move on to then unfinished business. Um, and, uh, I'd like to get a, um, a motion for A. A., and then we can discuss.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to waive bids and approve a contract with Lakeshore Recycling Systems LLC to perform solid waste collection and disposal services for the village of River Forest as proposed.
Second.
All righty. So, uh, Jeff, I see it up there. So I was going to give you the, uh, microphone right now and then we'll open it up for-
Sure. Uh, so as I'm sure you all recall, at the last meeting, we discussed the LRS Solid Waste Contract. And there were, uh, two points or two sections of text that we had discussed at that last meeting. So, um, I'll try to make this brief as well. And if you'll bear with me, I'm going to handle these out of order only because the second one that I put on the memo is, um, a lot more clear cut. It was the section that referenced the opt-out composting and triggering an automatic discussion with the vendor at fifty-one percent participation. Um, that language has just been modified to kind of memorialize the fact that we can have that discussion with the contractor at any point in time, should we wish. Um, again, the, the points that we discussed last time were the later we get into the contract, the contractor would just ask for a little more, you know, the understanding in terms of how long that contract is going to play out so that we're not trying to implement a brand new pro- uh, program village-wide for what could be a six-month term or something like that. So certainly up for having that discussion and negotiating that at any point in time throughout the contract. The other section of text was referencing the Unlimited Household Waste Removal Day. Um, the concern at the meeting and paraphrase, right, I'm trying to paraphrase. So by all means, step on my toes if, if I'm missing any of this. But the concern was, uh, some of the optics of that language and an unlimited, you know, waste removal day. Um, but there was also some concern about changing too much of that if, at the end of the day, we really are talking about an unlimited waste removal day. Um, the concern being that it might come across as disingenuous if we try to change that too much and, and call it something that it's not. So to try to meet in the middle to some degree, the language that we've proposed back here this evening is essentially the same language with the addition of the fact that the contractor would work with the village to try to divert as much of that waste from landfills as possible. Without knowing what kind of events we might plug in here, it's hard to say exactly how that takes place. So we've kind of tried to, because the event is vague, we've tried to keep the language somewhat vague as well. So those are the two sections of text that are here before you this evening. Um, for your discussion, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Right, um...
And I should point out George Strom and Katie Neary from LRS are here this evening as well, if we have-
Thanks, Phil.
Well, I do have a couple. Yeah. At our last meeting, we discussed revisions to the two provisions that you talked about, Jeff, and thank Lakeshore for agreeing immediately to the, to revisions that we requested. The fifty-one percent compost participation issue has been resolved. Um, unfortunately, the Unlimited Waste Day is still in the contract. And, um, when I read the minutes from our April eleventh meeting in our packet, they say that the trustees reached a consensus on this. When I saw that, I was optimistic and I thought that it would, the, um, waste contract would reflect that, but it doesn't. So I don't know if we have to change the wording of the minute, but I just want to go on record saying that I don't think we reached a consensus if this is the language that came out of that. I don't agree with it. Um, it appears to me that it's the village that asked to keep the free unlimited landfill day in the contract, um, even though Lakeshore is happy to take it out. Um, the only change in tonight's packet is this new added sentence that says that Lakeshore will work with the village to divert as much of this waste from the landfill as possible. Um, how would that work? Uh, there are no details. This seems to put the responsibility to sort through all of the residents' trash on the parkway on Lakeshore employees. I'm envisioning several trucks and a team of Lakeshore workers picking through the parkway trash, trying to decide what's what. Doesn't seem realistic or cost effective to me. Remember, the contract language says the village pays Lakeshore for this unlimited free landfill day, by the truck and employee by the hour. I had requested that the free landfill with no limit or cost day be removed from the contract because I felt that the contract already offered reasonable ways for residents to dispose of all types of waste without need for this. And offering a free as much as you want landfill day directly contradicts the village's written sustainability goals. It also undermines any incentive for residents to adopt more sustainable and responsible waste habits. The village has stated sustainability goals articulated broadly and in detail in many local, state, and national agreements that the village has signed and in our ordinances and in the Sustainability Commission mission and goal statement and in our comprehensive plan, which directs the village and this board to adopt best practices to help divert residential waste from landfills and enhance ongoing programs and systems to reduce landfill waste. So you may ask, what's this Unlimited Household Waste Removal Day for? Why do we need it? Well, it's not for a flood event because we've got that covered. Lakeshore is already going to pick up our flood debris. Not for construction at your house or heaven forbid a fire. It can't be that because those events can't be planned around a throw as much as you want in the landfill day. You need a dumpster. The village has a permitting structure for that. And all the other types of waste that I can think of are already covered in the contract. In addition to regularly scheduled recycling, curbside compost, and weekly landfill, the contract offers large item household waste pickup, like broken table or couch. There's an extra charge via the sticker purchase program. The price varies by the size and weight of the item. We have the electronic waste pickup from your home two times a year in this contract, no extra charge. We have your hazardous waste being picked up from your home two times a year, no extra charge in this contract. Is it because this is a contract term that has been in our waste hauling contract for decades? That's what was mentioned during the discussion at our last meeting. I don't see that as a reason to include contract language because it's always been there. As our village clerk said at the last meeting, words matter. If we leave this language in the contract, we have to own that we want it and that it represents the village's vision and intent. I don't agree with that. Since the village's last waste hauling contract was negotiated, we have signed the Greenest Region Compact One and Two, several Planet Green Agreements, and the Chicago Climate Accord, in all of which River Forest pledged to prioritize and implement strategies to help our community divert, divert waste from the landfill. This contract language does the exact opposite. I believe this board is responsible for writing the next chapter. I consider what happens next to be our responsibility. Whether we adopt outdated, outdated contract language that does not reflect our values, vi- vision, mission, and principles does matter. That's why I cannot vote for this waste contract if it includes the Unlimited Household Waste Removal Day language.
Okay, thank you, Katie. I, I want to make sure, um, that maybe the board and I are clear on this. Is that that is an option. It's, it's, the contract language is not, um, it's not saying you must do this, that you have to do this and you, or you will do this. It's just saying this is a pricing schema for you to consider should you choose to have a recycling or extravaganza day or a, um, junk away day, whatever, whatever term you want to use. So I don't think this, in my, knowing that and reading the contract and understanding, I think what the Sustainability Commission and what everybody around this board wants to do, and that is to divert, um, uh, materials from the landfill. That's why we continue. I mean, we just, we just, uh, did a, um, uh, compost awareness week resolution. I mean, we are constantly, I think this, I think the board, um, is constantly trying to make, make our residents aware of sustainable initiatives that they can take on, on their own by recycling and reusing, um, stuff. So I guess I'm struggling because I don't think the contract states that we are going to do it. It just is an option in pricing schema for if we choose to do it. That's how I look at it.
I'll just reiterate what you wrote in an email to me today, Kathy.
Yeah, okay.
Um, because I sent an email to Jeff and Brian today expressing my concern about this language and asking, you know, why is it in there? I thought we had reached, um, consensus at our last meeting. And, um, when, and I copied Kathy on my email. And what I got back from you was an email that's, that said, uh, that, talking about the recycling extravaganza. You said, "By putting words about the recycling extravaganza in the agreement, our residents would be led to believe that there would be an extravaganza event." So I, I turned those words back on you and say, "By, by including this language in about having a throw all you want into the landfill day in this agreement, can't one say, turn your language around and say residents will be led to believe that there will be one?"
Yeah. No, no, no. I, and, um, I can understand maybe, I know it was mine, I thought my email was clear, but if it isn't, I will make it clear. If we can organize an extravaganza day, Katie, and if you're, if you'd like to do what Julie Moore did, I don't think there's a person around this table nor in this community that would, um, you know, not encourage that. So that's what I was saying. I just didn't want any of the residents to call the village and say, "When are we having an extravaganza day?"
Okay, well, wait for those calls about the throw everything you want in the landfill.
Okay, hang on one minute. Okay, so, okay, Bob, is that, I don't know, because I keep saying the community room, which I think is this. Okay, Bob, go ahead.
So I, I was a little bit confused at the end of the last meeting because I didn't, A, I didn't think the, having the unlimited wasn't an issue keeping it in there. But I was confused over the conversation about naming it as an extravaganza versus something else. And I thought that was the point we were at at the end of the last meeting. So if somebody else has a different recollection, please let me know. Because taking it out, I didn't believe was any part of the conversation at the end of the last meeting.
And I agree with Bob. I, I thought that this was a simple change in wording where it would say something like Unlimited Household Waste slash Recycle Removal Day, and that that was going to clear this up. So I was surprised not to see it either.
But that's what, that, we haven't touched it other than this, it stayed the same unless, I mean, you guys, we could, again, I mean, I think we've got a, I think that's what it's saying, Erica. It's, it's exactly saying that.
If we just put it there, I think that would-
It is, that is-
Bob, I can hear you. So Bob, okay, there you go.
So the, so the, so I didn't, I didn't, again, I didn't think the issue was having it in or having it out. I thought we were leaving it in, as Erica just expressed, and it was a naming thing. So, you know, so to take it out, that's different than what we talked about.
Okay. And I guess I have a comment. Uh, and, and trying to address, I think, if there's any confusion, whatever. But the way I read this, and we can call it whatever you want, okay, extravaganza, house removal, that, to me, it's about, you know, that semantics on that part. But it does say, if the, the village and the contractor agree, if the village desires to have an unlimited household, the village can decide not to desire it, not to have it. And that can be a discussion for the board. And they can vary from, I guess, one year yes, one year no, or whenever we decide. But, so it gives us that flexibility. So, uh, trust me, Brennan, I think we're going to have that discussion if we ever want it to have that day, um, to go place or not. Um, this just gives you the option to have it or not. I guess I'm, um, maybe just saying that it doesn't guarantee that we have to have it. It doesn't guarantee that we will not have it. It just says if we want to have it.
Completely understood. I, I agree. I have the same interpretation that you do. But having that language in this contract says that the village prioritizes the ability for our residents to just put all their trash, not sort it, on the parkway and with the intent for it to go into the landfill for one day a year, unlimited, no cost. And I don't think that's what we're about in all of these agreements that we sign in the mission and goals of the Sustainability Commission and in our comprehensive plan. It says the opposite. Our goal is to divert community-wide residential waste from landfills, period.
And you're saying-
It's not to allow our residents to, to bypass all of the good work that we put in the rest of this contract to allow, you know, we've got your, we've got your e-waste covered. We've got your, um, you know, your compost covered if you're willing to pay for it. And, and it doesn't, it doesn't, um, escape my notice that this, this provision twelve in this contract is essentially an opt-out of throw everything you want in the landfill. We, we're struggling to get opt-out for compost, which is what all of the goals of this village say. All of our goals are behind opt-out compost, but we're not able to get it yet. But we're, but are the rest of you around this table telling me that you're willing to keep section twelve that says, "By the way, all of it, all the residents in the village are going to underwrite, um, you if you want to put unlimited waste on your parkway and it's all going to go in the landfill." Unless somehow these magic Lakeshore, uh, employees are able to pick through it, you know, and decide what goes where.
I think, I have to, let me just-
Hang on, Ken. Let's just finish and then-
Okay. I, and Katie, believe you and me, I appreciate what you're saying. But at the same time, if you want to encourage residents, you don't tie their hands. And I'll explain. I mean, this whole thing about forcing residents to do this without, we're talking about one day of doing this. And you're making, you appear, or maybe you're thinking that everyone's going to be doing this every day. It's a one-day thing.
I, I read the contract the same way you do.
Okay.
I read the contract the exact same way. But, but your hands aren't tied. There are, there are ways to dispose of all the different types of waste that someone would want to put out there. Why not follow the rules that we have in this contract, um, for all the different types of waste? Why do we need this? I, I, I don't get it. Why do we need this? Why, why would we do it?
I think it's just an option. It, it, you're, you're assuming we're going to do it. I think that's the, maybe the difference a little bit.
I, I read it. I understand it's an option.
Yeah, that's all. And it's no different than the, uh, uh, the first language, uh, part. I mean, you know, you, taking the fifty-one percent is not a big deal because it, it was, that was just the threshold out there that said that would automatically be something. But it gave us, it never took away our option to negotiate. It's the same here.
And I agree with that, yeah. You were next. I'm sorry, I cut you off, Ken.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm done. I was just saying you-
I was going to say that I agree with Erica and Bob that I did think we were going to change it. And we left saying that that was what we were going to do and we would take recommendations on how to do it. So the only confusion I have is if we changed it, does that remove this whole discussion or not, in your opinion?
No.
Well, I think it's a bigger issue, Ken. It's not just wording. It's really a way of being.
Well, but I don't think she's advocating removing-
So I think what Katie is saying- So, I think what Katie is saying is this is not our way of being.
Yeah, unlimited.
Well, unlimited is, has always been in the, as an option.
Agreed, but that's what we discussed in the last meeting.
It would be unlimited, just bring what you can. And many, um, so, the word unlimited, I mean, again, it was always, I don't think it was that that we were trying to, uh, remove. I think it was more, how do we encourage people to recycle and reuse?
Which is why we changed the word. I thought that was the reason why we are deciding to change how it is presented because reading it the, uh, with, with that language, it does have a different meaning than, say, what we thought was the recycle extravaganza. And so, unlimited versus recycle extravaganza, I don't think they're the same things.
I mean, couldn't we just say waste or recycle removal day, and that includes our vision of recycling as well, and whether we use it or not? It feels like that's a small change to make. Katie, I don't know if that would cover for you, but I feel like that's a good way of going about this tonight.
I, I, I'm picking up that there's some, there's some confusion about recycling extravaganza and this landfill palooza day. They're completely opposite. They have complete opposite results and intents. One is to allow you to throw all your stuff out, no worries, they pick it up on your parkway. No, don't sort it or anything. The recycling extravaganza had, you know, you saved corks. There was a cork department. There was a battery department. There was a light bulb department. I mean, you, that was, and we, and we had, um, we had links with all of the different entities that were going to recycle those things. I consider recycling extravaganza to be the opposite of this landfill palooza. And I had thought, perhaps incorrectly, I had thought at, at our April 11th meeting that we were replacing this section 12 with recycling extravaganza.
So, so, and, and that is a major difference, Ken, and Erica, so you understand. The extravaganza was phenomenal, okay? Julie Moller took a group of volunteers to do what Katie just said. It was unbelievable. I don't know, how many volunteers were there, um, would you say?
Well, you know, George is, George was intimately involved. So, he can answer.
Yeah, you, you could talk to him. And George actually then, once it was all kind of sorted out, George would take the waste and, and then recycle it or reuse it. So, George was just the end product at the end. But the work of the, of the sorting that Katie's referring to, which was phenomenal, was all done by volunteers. So, I said to all of you, if we could create an extravaganza that is a one-day, bring all your stuff and we'll sort it for, or somebody, the volunteer group will sort it for you, and then we can get Strom or LRS to go ahead and, and, you know, haul it away in the proper spot, that, I, I'm all in. But what's not being discussed is there's no extravaganza. There's nothing that we have unless we.
Because it's an opt-in. I mean, it's an option.
No, it's, it's a volunteer program.
It's an option.
It's an option the same way that this.
Julie Moller, by her own self, created this wonderful program. Julie Moller doesn't live in River Forest anymore, so the program kind of went, because it was a volunteer, basically volunteers. It was phenomenal. I mean, I agree with Katie. It was the awesome thing. Problem is, we have to duplicate what Julie did, and it takes time and energy by a group of volunteer people. So, that's my point. We could certainly do that. This is not, it doesn't exclude doing that. It just says, you know, short of not having that for our residents to do, then what else do you have? You have to then put it to the curb, and, and again, it goes to the, so, I thought the, what we were thinking is, okay, we don't have the extravaganza, but we could get it to the curb and let LRS then begin, do the sorting that would normally be sorted by volunteers, but now may, can maybe be sorted by LRS. That's all, that's, that, it was nothing more than that. So, if we have a solution that takes care of what Katie says, I'm all in, but right now we don't.
What, what, what is the problem that needs a solution? We have already created a stream for all of this waste.
So, where does, where does the corks go? So, where does the, where does the light bulbs go? Where does the couch go?
Well, corks go to Whole Foods.
Yeah, see, that's my point. But you, it's, and that's my whole point, is that it is, and Lisa has said it time and time again, it's an awareness.
But are you telling me that Lake Shore is going to be separating out corks and light bulbs on my parkway?
Maybe help us put the awareness program. It's, it's, okay, if it's not LRS, and I don't want to dominate the conversation, then who? You're saying we're going to take it.
Sustainability, I, I mean, the, the recycling extravaganza is a red herring here. I think we put that to the side. My concern, as I've stated, is that we have no reason to, to need this throw everything in the landfill for free day. We have a stream for all of our, all of our waste.
Then, then we don't do the option. That's what I'm saying. I think, I mean, unless I'm reading this differently.
Then we don't need it in the contract, and it flies against everything, everything else that you have signed, Kathy.
And I am committing to it. I, I don't, but I don't, but I don't think having an option in, I don't know, personally, I didn't see it as offensive. I just thought it, there's an option that's sitting there, so we don't have to negotiate in the future. So, I don't know, George, I don't know if you want to talk about this yourself. I don't want to get you in the middle of it, but I just want to make sure they, because some of us are new to this, and so I just want to make sure it's clearer, that, I, you know.
I was just going to say, if we currently have all these streams of whatever they are, couldn't you do it on one day, and then the streams would be one big that everyone bring whatever it is that we normally could put, five tags for a peo- for, uh, for an item that weighs above something, and you could still ask for the five tags, but instead of putting it on the curb, you're bringing it to a certain area? Am I missing the point here?
Yeah, you're missing it. I think the, the question, I think, really, we need to do is ensure that our residents understand how to recycle. If you don't give them that education, they're, everything is a curve, and it. I'm saying, not necessarily, because that's what they do. They do recycling, but that's the whole issue. So, I'd say, you know, the option can stay, and what we really need to do is spend some money edu-, you know, in educating our residents.
I don't, I. It undermines everything that we've been working for. Um, and, and let's acknowledge that the last time we negotiated this contract was before most of our, you know, agreements have been signed. It was before our Sustainability Commission even existed. So, this is an opportunity for us to, to update outdated language and outdated thinking.
And I, 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 I mean, I, all, this could talk, I just think that there's residents out there, they, they want an opportunity to recycle their their electronics.
They have that, it's in the agreement, twice a, twice a year for free at your, that's not part of the, that's not needed at the pickup for free on, you know, landfill palooza.
You know what I'm saying? They, they want an option to, I mean, again, it's an option. It may even be taken. Go ahead, George.
So, um, in the room, if you will. But, um, I think honestly, it's been such a good conversation, be able to actually sit back and listen has really been helpful. Because just in this brief conversation, we've gotten kind of some really good insight on even what this kind of event could turn into. You know, I've talked a lot about the recycling extravaganza, which was a fantastic thing that really was never part of the municipal agreement. So, don't, I hope no one is confused that that was part of something, because it wasn't. It was, you know, one person that took it on, and then as just kind of, um, a good, um, you know, part of the community, we stepped up every way we could to support it. But with the language in this agreement, and I understand the points that have been made, you know, obviously, you always want to have the best agreement from the vill- village's side to enable them to enact things that they would like to happen rather quickly. So, there's a rate matrix in there in regards to collection, and it's mostly in there just if there's ever an emergency, you know? So, we've already negotiated. If you ever had an emergency, if you had a tornado like we dealt with in some of our other municipal locations, we can come in immediately and start picking up, and you never have to fight afterwards when I'm saying it's a thousand dollars a minute for my truck to come through town. It's already negotiated. So, it makes it a lot easier too than to kind of piggyback off that and say, "Well, if we want, if we ever want to do X, how much, how much is a charge?" And you just say, refer to the matrix that we already have when there's an emergency. So, regardless, if we ever did a mass, you know, a junk away day, or whatever you want to call it, the rate's there. So, if we scratched it out or kept it, the rate is there, right? And what I'm getting at is, I think that the language that we've t- kind of adjusted to make it speak of, there will be work to, to divert it if this were to ever even be discussed. And mind you, I've been representing this account, I think, for 15 years. And I've never heard the, ever even really brought up that much other than if we have it in there. So, I think it's just a great option to have in there now that we have the language that speaks about, you know, effort to recycle. Because theoretically, you could put together something that just says, "Hey, through an education campaign, working with Sustainability Committee", to say, if this, mind you, these are all theoreticals. This is probably never even going to happen because it's something that we're going to have to elect to do. But if we ever did, you could make it now to say, "Let's get something similar to figure out, okay, if you have cork screws you want to get rid of, put it to curb in this bin. If you want this, we'll pick it up." All these different things, and it's really a streamlined collection. So, I mean, leaving it in there doesn't, in my personal opinion, as, as someone who knows this industry fairly well, I don't think it, in its current wording, uh, speaks significantly about encouraging landfilling, especially in the context that we're looking to put it in, which is encouraging diversion. And you've done a great job with all the other initiatives that have been put into this agreement to encourage diversion and a lot of the green initiatives. So, to have it be so kind of now brought off the rails over one specific issue, it loses a lot of the great focus that we should be discussing, which is the composting program, the HHW program, the e-waste program. This is such a forward-thinking community. I would hate to get all this progress lost in some nuances of a contract. But we can even use that to actually make it positive. Because we could say, "Well, in two years, let's talk about this thing", and now all of a sudden, we create an even better program out of this language. Because once that language is gone, I don't have to do it. Now, you could call me tomorrow and say, "Now you have to do a junk away day or work with sustainability and create a curbside day." Once it's gone, I don't have to do it. So, that's all.
Like, to just go back to the meeting a couple of weeks ago, the consensus, in my opinion, based on what I was hearing, was that changing the language. We were not changing any element to the contract, and we were changing the language. Language did not fit with the spirit of how this village wants to handle their waste. That simple. And now seem to be arguing about all the aspects of how we're going to get waste picked up. We were just speaking to the language. And my comment to Katie privately was, words do matter. Well, everybody on sports, it's on these committees. What are the first things you start with when you begin? You begin with language. Write down what you want to represent and portray. And it was really asking for was change the language.
And I don't think anybody disagrees. I think what George is saying is, um, change the language. Again, I think all we're trying to do is get the flexibility in the contract. It wasn't to make it like we're, I think, that's all, that's all. Don't want to get bogged down in semantics. Other comments, um?
Well, I just don't want to belabor this. We're, and, and my personal standpoint. I mean, the option is there. We can continue this discussion whenever we ever decide if we are going to have that. In those parameters of what we're going to do or not do. You know, Lord, I just like options, and if they're in our favor, it doesn't, but if the village decides it's for us, I didn't believe you me, uh, residents are always coming to us at the table whenever we're going to decide or discuss something if they feel concerned about it. And I'm not saying that they won't, but this is something I think that we're going to hear from if we ever decide we're going to move in this direction. So, one way or the other. So, um, I don't, I, I'm fine with.
I would like to propose adding after, anywhere it makes sense, after waste, we just say waste or recycling, and, um, I think that that allows us to show the spirit of our sustainability to a certain extent, understand what Katie if we were to add, um, that that would make.
She would say waste, just, um, waste or recycling, or waste removal and recycling?
Waste or recycling.
No issues with that. I just didn't, didn't want to take it out completely.
I don't have any issues with that either, so.
All right, so.
So, just so I can clarify, I just want to make sure we capture. Motion is as it stands.
No, we're going to add a word recycle, but I want to make sure we get it to the.
Right.
We got unlimited household waste recycling.
Are you okay with that proposed language? You sure? Sure to God?
Yeah, 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 we're going to, we're going to get this done, no worries. So, unlimited household waste recycle.
Okay.
Unlimited household waste or recycle.
I just want to make sure if they're okay with it too.
Or recycle removal day.
And then wherever it says.
So, no problem.
Right, that's what we discussed.
Yeah.
It'll say waste or recycle.
That's fine.
How about waste and/or recycling? Be happy.
That's fine. And/or, it's fine. That's because that's what they're going to do. They're going to recycle. All right, so, is anyone, who made the motion?
It was Trustee Johnson.
Bob, are you okay with that then, as a second?
I made the motion.
Yes.
No, John, uh, uh, Ken moved, you second, right, Bob?
Yes, I'm going on second.
Erica made the mo- motion.
No, who made it?
No, no, the original motion was made by Ken Johnson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second, the second on that was Bob. So, if Ken and Bob are willing to accept like Erica's offering, then it just becomes part of their motion.
I'll, I'll take care of it.
I'm sorry.
And you're okay? Bob, you're okay?
Yes, I am.
Yes.
Yes, you're okay. Very good. All right, so let's, uh, take the vote.
Trustee Gillis.
Yes.
Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
With all respect to our waste hauling partner, no.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were going. Move to approve an ordinance adopting the annual budget Move to approve an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May twenty twenty-two and ending on the thirtieth day of April twenty twenty-three for the village of River Forest, Illinois.
Second.
Very good, Bob. I know, it's so hard.
It is, it doesn't.
We, we, we got, we already moved and seconded. So we're just getting, asking for any questions that you might have on the operating budget. I think we've gone through it extensively so far.
Yeah, we had a public hearing too.
And we had a public hearing. We've discussed it several times, so, but if there is any questions, uh, you know, Kiki's here and others can answer. Of course, Brian can answer any questions. So hearing done, um, I'll go ahead and then ask the clerk to please take the vote.
Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Gillis.
Yes.
Very good. Um, let's see, Peggy, are you there? There she is. Hi Peggy.
Hi.
Um, okay, um, welcome. Uh, this is Chairperson, um, uh, um, Peggy Daly, um, who has led our efforts, uh, um, changing our ethics ordinance. Um, this is the first major overhaul we've had on our ethics ordinance in, I don't know, twenty years, maybe. Um, so, um, I, I wanted you to meet, um, Chair, Chairperson Daly, but, um, I also wanted to let, uh, Chairperson Daly kinda give us a little update. I know that, um, just so you know, our attorney did go through a lot of the changes Peggy, uh, last time, so we're aware of the significant changes that we've made to our ethics ordinance. And of course, I'm very pleased and proud that we took this bold step. Um, I think we're the first that, uh, of many communities that even Fargo, uh, that took this bold step to really, um, make our ethics, uh, strong and, um, hopefully enforceable. So with that, Peggy, do you wanna say anything? Um, cause I know you guys put a lot of time and energy in it.
We did put a lot of time and energy into it and, you know, we reached out to look at other ordinances, best practices um, for similar size, um, municipalities. We put together a terrific commission of very dedicated, um, and, and very smart people. Um, and we spent a lot of time going through it, um, uh, really line by line. And then worked with, uh, with village council to, uh, to make sure that we, that we were all aligned. And, um, I think what was brought to you, um, for approval was the, the final that I believe that was signed off on by the commission as well as your, uh, outside council. Um, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions if there are any, uh, with regard to any of the specific provisions.
I don't know, I'll open it up to the trustees. I know, again, we had our first discussion, so this is our second. Um, I, no, I don't have any questions. I, I just wanted to say again, thank you for your time and effort. Um, and you bring a lot of, um, great experience to the table for us, so, uh, thank you, uh, thank you for that.
Well, thank, thank you for, um, you know, asking me to do it. It's something that is sort of near and dear to my heart and I'm, uh, was delighted to be able to assist. And, uh, I think, you know, w- once this gets enacted, um, you'll be really at the top of the class in terms of municipalities having, um, uh, having a, a code that is, um, uh, really kind of best in class.
Yep, 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 thank you.
Okay, um, I have a question. I remember at last, our last meeting, we talked about the three different categories of, um, individuals who are, um, covered by this ethics ordinance. There was the contractors, the village board members and commissions, and then village-covered individuals that included employees and, uh, firefighters and police and volunteers of the village. I remember we had that discussion. And I can't remember what we, how that shifted out with volunteers of the village and advisory group members. Can you give us some clarity?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Well,
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. I, I think you, you have to look at it provision by provision and the, they're defined within the, um, the code itself. There's a definitional category like you see in many, many regulations. And then each individual provision will state to whom it applies. Um, so it, it's not as if every provi- provision applies to every category of person to which, um, uh, is, is a defined term. You really need to, to be very specific about it and look at the defined terms. For example, the gift ban, um, will tell you who it applies to.
So Peggy, following up on Trustee Brennan's comment, are there provisions then in there that will, would deal with the volunteers?
Yes.
Um, well, yes, to the degree, let me pull this up. Um, because, for example, I'm a volunteer, um, and on, uh, on a commission. And so certain provisions would apply. Um, in, in the same way that, you know, we have, uh, the, um, you know, the state ethics code applies and you have to fill out certain, uh, disclosures, uh, whether or not you're, uh, um, um, cause I'm a, I'm a, I'm a volunteer. But I, if you're talking about, does that, does it apply to somebody that's volunteering as a coach? No.
Okay.
Let me see if I can pull this up.
Yeah, so, um, this is, uh, Greg Smith. Good evening, Chair Daly. Um, the, um, volunteers are included in the definition of village-covered individual.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, among, along with employees and all elected officials and commission members. And as Chair Daly noted, and as I mentioned at the last meeting, the use of the defined terms is very intentional. And the Ethics Commission, myself and staff, spent a lot of time making sure that the correct groups of people were subject to the different requirements, um, that you find in the ordinance. And as a result, your ordinance exceeds, uh, by a great deal, the minimum requirements that state law sets. So this ordinance does put you far ahead of, of your peers.
Good. That's what we strive for. Okay. Is that, is that answered, Katie? A question? Not really?
Well, as long as, as, as long as Greg understands it.
I've, I've spent an awful lot of time with this document. There's specific questions. Happy to answer them tonight or in follow-up. Um, volunteers, for instance, while volunteering for the village cannot engage in political activities like you'd expect. The ordinance makes that clear.
Right.
Right.
Um, I just wanna note, uh, I had asked, uh, the staff and Greg to look at providing, um, gender neutral terms instead of his and her. And, um, so I was very happy, Greg, that you did that and that you will do that on contracts going forward. Here, we, we do have at least one that I've seen under, um, one dash two, three dash three, uh, A one, um, where it says his/her, um, but
Yeah, I apologize, that didn't get caught.
I'm assuming that you will take-
Yeah, Erica, I forgot to say that. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, we, yeah, agreed.
I, yeah.
I think they just did a search and replacement.
Right, that, that one slipped through. We'll make sure to catch it for the final that gets codified. And going forward, um, when my office and staff works on legislation and contracts, we'll use, uh, gender neutral terms.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, so.
No, I just, just generally, Peggy, I just wanna thank you for, uh, chairing that committee and thank all the committee members for doing this, uh, you know, heroic task. I know it's not always a fun thing. I'm glad you're enjoying it. Uh, but it's not always a fun thing to deal with, so thank you and your committee members.
Well, thank you very much. It was an honor to serve. And, um, uh, I, I will pass that along to the committee members. They put an awful lot of work into it and, um, yeah, it was a pleasure to serve with them.
Okay, very good. Uh, without any other comments, I'll go ahead and, uh, ask the clerk to, to, we have a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
And a second?
I'm move to approve the proposed amendments to the ethics ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, John. Sorry, I thought we did that.
No.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes, and thank you Peggy and the rest of the commission for all your work.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Great, thank you, thank you. It was, no executive session, right? No, there's no need. So, okay, we, um, I think that concludes our s- board meeting. So I'll ask for, um, motion to adjourn.
Motion to, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the village board meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Alright.
Trustee Bren? Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Am I always last? Yes.
Yeah.
President Ducey?
Yeah, yes. No, I wanna stay.
I'm sorry.
I just want one day to go first, that's all.
Are you always last?
No.
No. Well, I don't, yeah.
Bye, thank you.
Yes, you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you Peggy, thank you Bob.
Hey, we're not going to go take your question.
No, no, no.
No, we're not.
We're done.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, so have fun in California. Bye.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Goodbye.
Have no fear, have no fear. You too, don't forget me.
Very good.
It's about time you were resolving this contract. Thank you so much, Brian, your times, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Katie.
Yeah, and I love you too, although I don't like twelve, so.
Oh my God, that's right.
Okay, now is a good time or no? Okay, good. Okay, let me come up.
Just meet at the top upstairs.
Can I get through? Oh, okay.
Kathy, are you busy? You working on something?
No, 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 I was just, uh, just thinking.
Okay, I was gonna say, I'm at, at some point soon it's set up for that new neighbor, so, we'll do something together, so I'll let you know. You might probably already have done some by time, like, I'm so busy right now at work. I said I'm so busy right now at work, you probably might be highly accomplished before I even get around to it, but I'm gonna try your heart to have a little get-together with the new neighbor. Yeah, 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 so, yeah. Yeah.
Like I said, I, I met James, but I haven't met Chelsea. And she's supposed to be around. I, I dropped off a planner for them, just like a new planner.